I'm here, can you hear me?
And we can't hear him, okay, hold on just a second. He can hear us, I don't think we can hear him.
Yeah, I can hear you just fine.
We'll figure it out. Yeah, doesn't look like we're muted, so.
Nope, we're not.
Any better there?
Testing, testing, can you hear me? I hear something, sounds like the Three Stooges.
I just heard you right now.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, but it's coming in through my computer, not through the speakers, so we're getting there then. Okay, try to talk one more time if you would.
Okay.
Nope, that's not gonna work.
No.
It's up to a hundred, right?
Testing, one, two, three, can you hear me?
Good evening, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, sorry for a little bit of delay, we're working hard on our bandwidth and weight thing.
Obviously, we don't have enough.
We call this meeting to order, this is a agenda of the, or this is the regular session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, county co-chiefs of state of Arizona, it's being held on Tuesday, September fifth, twenty twenty-three, at seven oh five P M, in council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Juan Etta Hill is excused, councilmember Johnny Giacomo is excused, councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Natalie.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Ennaman, your city staff, Stephen Parkin, city manager, Ashley Pornato, state clerk, Carrie Beasley, finance director, Joel Landers, personnel director, Matthew Gurney, public work director, Tim Cox, police chief, Jim Richard, fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Thank you. For a moment of silence, we'll have a moment of personal, everyone's asked me to stand and then I'll say a pledge of allegiance, so.
Liberty and justice for all.
So, something with things, housekeeping things, and like a moment of personal preference stuff in my announcements. First off, just to let everybody know that we've been talking about upgrading our Facebook page, so we're going to be doing that over the next two weeks after this one's in, so something all freaked out, if you can't get on it, but guaranteed it will be up and running for our next council meeting, so just the redesign and updating on that, so that will be happening over the next couple of weeks. And then, secondly, I just want to let everybody know that five of us went off to the League of Cities and Towns, Arizona League of Cities, I had a good conference there for four days, and had a lot of different people and heard a lot of different ideas, and so I believe that that will become something that we can all work together towards as we bring those ideas back and make stuff work. I just personally, I wanted to say that there was one speaker that that spoke to me and I thought it would be an appropriate thing to look at, which was since that history is relevant, but don't be a resident there. So, if you dwell in the past or a resident there, you always will end up in, so you must leave from the present and always look towards the future, and I truly believe over these last two and a half years of this council and our staff has done that. Staff will probably be glad when I move, because I'll go on, because we won't be pushing quite so hard, but but that's just, you know, you've got to leave from looking forward and the past is good to understand where it came from, but don't sit there and live in that, so I just thought that was a kind of a poignant thing to me. So, anyway, I did a little thing about what we've accomplished in the last thirty-two months, and I'm gonna read them all tonight, we have a big agenda, but but it was, he recommended I go back and look at what our past has been, and had we been sitting in the in the residence of the past, or moving forward, I think we'd die, so. All right, with that, I'll call the public, I don't have anybody else to call, I do have some, or some agenda items, so I'll tell them when we get to those, and if there's no objection from the council, I'd like to move to number ten, or number fifteen up to number ten, so then it would just do all of the public work stuff, boom, 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 at the end, so that would, we have a couple of speakers who write that at that point, so I moved up forward just a little bit, move on from there, so first order of business right now will be a council payable, we have a motion.
I move that we pay the technical payable in the amount of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and fourteen cents.
Okay.
I have a motion to second, page of council payable. We have questions.
On page sixteen, on vehicle parts and labor, I just want to know, we have a couple of big development equipment for four thousand six hundred and sixty-nine, and the freight liner of Arizona, four, six, twenty-six. I mean, and there's another one for nineteen eighteen, the freight liner of Arizona. What vehicles are these? These are, these are our our garbage trucks, our commercial and residential garbage trucks.
But I thought we had just purchased those, aren't they still under warranties? Seems like we have a lot of problems with those.
No, not everything is under warranty on those, or they've, you know, the warranty has lasted.
I mean, we haven't had those for what, a year now, a little less than a year?
Hold on, excuse me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we had problems before, I mean, it seems like we keep having problems, this has cost us a lot of money. When we made the decision to go and buy these trucks, we thought, were they brand new, we paid a ton of money for these, we gave our trucks away, and now here, they're nickel and dime us, just, I'm not getting this. I think we would like a better explanation, why are these not covered, I mean, we paid over twenty thousand for these trucks, and it's been breaking down, the reason I'm bringing this, because it's been breaking down since, almost since day one. What did we do wrong here? Why, why is this costing us so much? And not only costing us, I mean, I felt sorry for the, for the, for the collection the other day, they were using the old trucks by hand, and they were and this is not the first time, not the second time, this is the third or fourth time. Really, I, I believe we need to do something about this, find out why are we having so much problem? Is it maintenance? Were these trucks defective? Have we gone back on what it is?
Yeah, and some of these, like the ones from Baylar, well, not the repair, but the harnesses, the one for twenty-four hundred, that is stuff we bought ahead of time, we bought in preparation, if we have anything breakdown, we don't have to wait for parts, we can go ahead and install them. Those are some things that have gone bad in the past, and so we went ahead and purchased them ahead of time, so we don't have any concerns for those. So, these are things that are, wiring harnesses is a big part of these, are, and that's not under, been under warranty for those wiring harnesses.
I understand this, sometimes things do break down, but my, my, my last question would be, or my, my last comment, really need to do, we need to find out why are we having so much problem, not just for the cost, it's for the delay in picking up garbage, but the amount of work that has been put, I saw the collectors in front of my house, they were using all trucks and they're going by hand. I mean, this has been, has been going on, we bought these trucks to make things easier, to make things more efficient, we paid a ton of money, and you guys remember the first time when we bought these trucks and we gave our trucks away, we're working then, it seems like these have, have, have nothing but a problem. I just need to make sure, are we not doing the maintenance, are we not doing the proper check-in on these, why are they breaking down? We need some kind of answer, that's all.
When we put, take it to the freight line though, last time, I did talk to the service guy over, that was over the trucks, and he did say that there are some things that need to be looked at a little bit better with pre-trip and post-trip inspections, and that's one thing that I've been hammering down on my sanitation supervisor to do, to make sure we're, we're being diligent about looking at the trucks, checking those things that might be leaking or wearing differently, and so, yes, we have been trying to be proactive on that. And our guys, they don't want to be out there picking it up by hand, so they're, hey, hey, you guys need to be looking at this, so, yes.
We just need to do a better job of, 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 yeah, check-in, doing the checklist.
Yeah, part of it, some of it, like wiring harnesses, we can't, we don't, we can't see or check or anything, I mean, we can see if there's any brakes or anything, but some of the, a lot of wiring harnesses is not something you can really find or check or anything like that, so. Yeah, we are doing our job, trying to make sure we're doing better.
The first breakdowns were covered by, by the one, the one the dry line went, you know. See, this is how you handled that one. And we had a conversation with them, and
Yeah.
I think they were, they were serving on that whole, that there's certain things that should have been caught on a pre-trip inspection and stuff like that. Some of the complications here is you got two different companies that you're dealing with as well, you've got the chassis company, and then you've got the output company, and all the stuff that goes together, and these are pieces of equipment that get heavy-duty usage out of, because they're, you know, constantly idling, going, always running, going uphill, you know, everything that they have to do. But we will definitely, if there are questions and concerns with regard to warranty coverage and stuff like that, we
Maybe we can go on back.
Yeah, we'll have another conversation.
What the mayor was talking about, we did get with Joe to check and see if this is something.
I, I remember this, yeah, that's what the mayor just said, I thought, what he thought too, the first time, that was, and I think the issue, like Joe just said, and that's why I want to bring this up, are we doing the check-in, are we doing the checklist? It's like, it's like an airplane, you really have to do a pre-check list, and when you bring it back.
Yes.
Otherwise, this is gonna drain you, I'll tell you, it's gonna kill your budget.
Yeah, and that's exactly what we've been doing, my drivers.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, go ahead.
On twelve, under the transient room text, we have quite a few meta disputed.
Right, I checked her out today. What happened was the credit card got scanned, and those charges were put on to us from Facebook, we paid them, we disputed them, they'll come back as a refund to us at the next. So, yeah, it's, we've lost a couple of different credit cards to to scam stuff, I know Ashley had to change one, and so did this one, I don't know where, yeah.
But no reason we're updating, consolidating Facebook and social media stuff.
Yeah, we're working on some of that on this background, but that's what those are, they're false charges, and we disputed them, and then we had to pay them, but they should have given a refund at the next. Harry's answering today. Anything else? All right, I have a motion to second to approve accounts payable, the amount of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and fourteen cents, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the debate. Very now the ayes have it, so move. Moving on, item two, this is the consent agenda, we have two approval of minutes, and we have one appointment with Department of Recs, and one appointment to the Integrating Cemetery. Anybody have anything they would like to board? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda items A through D, second.
I have a motion to second to approve consent agenda as listed items A through D, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the debate. Very now the ayes have it. Moving on, this is for item will be all business, item three, this discussion of possible approval of ordinance O D A twenty-three thirteen, this is amending the code of the city of Bisbee, article nine point four, removal of litter, section nine point four point one. This is by repealing, replacing section D, the definition of dilapidated buildings. This is the second time we've heard this, we went over it last time, do we anybody have any more comments or concerns? Then I'll entertain a motion for item three. Anybody? I know it's a long one.
I'll do it.
Okay.
I move to approve ordinance O twenty-three dash thirteen, amending the code of the city of Bisbee, article nine point four dash mover, litter section nine point four one, nine dot four, dot one, definition by appealing and replacing the subsection D, the definition of the dilapidated building, and adding a new subsection E, the definition of vacant and insecure structures.
I have a motion to second, who approve ordinance O dash twenty-three dash thirteen as agenda size all the ordinance, we have to have a roll call, thank you.
Councilmember David.
Aye.
Councilmember John.
Aye.
Councilmember Sully.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes, you have a sleep, bye, see you. Now on to new business, new business will be item four, this is discussion of possible approval of the technology software as a service, a S A S, well, that's our agreement with, with whatever, I'll see, I don't give that to you.
So, this company will update our current zoning maps that hasn't been done in goodness, and I want to say ten-plus years, if not more. Our zoning maps are quite outdated, and it makes things quite difficult, and we need to go and figure out if a property is zoned commercial, if it's zoned, you know, just whatever it has been changed to, so we don't have any way of looking it up besides going through old paperwork, basically. These would be updated and online, and once we do purchase the upgraded maps, if we choose not to renew for another year, the maps still belong to us.
Okay, questions or comments?
There's a question, the amount, the four thousand seventy, that's just for one year?
One year.
Including the work, including the updating?
Everything.
Okay, and if we decide to renew, it will be for the same price?
It would be the same price for another year.
But we own the
But we own our maps for that year, and they're updated and ready to go.
Okay, thanks.
Change is already too much, when you, when you're in order for twenty years.
Been a long time, yeah, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? And a motion for item four?
I move to approve the technology software as is a service.
I second.
It could be a medicine, you see how it was a medicine made on a treatment? We have a motion to second to approve item four. Technology software, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the debate. Very now the ayes have it. Move on, on five, this is a discussion of possible approval of the acceptance of the Arizona county vis, emergency supplemental funding program grant awarded to Bisbee Police Department, the amount of twelve thousand dollars for funding of twelve desktop computers.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. This is a grant that I applied for through the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission, specifically related to upgrade our desktop and computer computers in the police station that are currently in use. Basically, this allows to get more updated systems, more updated software, faster systems with faster capabilities to access our criminal, our various criminal justice system softwares and applications that we have to use in our records department, and the officers have to utilize on a daily basis throughout the station. Right now, we have computer systems inside the station that can't open two programs at once, and some of these systems you have to open two programs at once to be able to input the data. And the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission was kind enough to reach out to me, said that they could help give us a grant for what we needed and make that happen, so that's simply what this is. It's a one-time buy of all the computers involved, they'll pay for it, and we're done. Almost twenty percent? Almost, I'm trying to get there, we're not using chisels and tablets, so I'm okay.
Questions, comments?
Chief, would you have to update any software or any additional costs that may go along with this?
No, it's all included in the grant, sir, I made sure every light item that I personally needed and wanted is in.
It will be included in the twelve thousand, yeah.
It's in the contract that's attached to the grant, yes, sir.
Yes, just, just a comment. You're killing it, chief, on all the grants, and
Not doing good.
Appreciate you very, very much, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Now, we're the monitors, keep up.
That's the other thing, but we have those, so.
I'll be your next one. All right, I have a motion, I'm sorry, I don't have any motion. Do we have any other questions or comments? We know about a motion for this grant.
Pose name, there we go. You're off the hook, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have item A, this is a discussion of possible approval to award a documentation consultation services contract for Camp Nakco. Mr. Norman, I don't know if you want to present this here? And then I got one person sign up to speak to this.
Okay, Mayor, Members Council?
Yeah.
Um, one of the tasks that is funded by the Malogram is documentation at Camp Nakco. So part of the documentation project is to film and video progress of the renovation as it was along. Uh, the other part of it is to um, uh, collect stories from people that live there, people that had relatives or ancestors that were either Buffalo soldiers or lived at Camp Nakco at some point. Um, so we had received two proposals uh, to provide that service. Uh, one was from, and I don't know if I'm pronouncing this correctly, but uh, Honorica Productions. Uh, the other was from Gerald Lamb, both are uh, videographers and uh, both were very good proposals. Uh, the uh, project team reviewed the proposals and recommended that I'm going to be awarded to Gerald Lamb. Uh, provide the uh, documentation services.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna let, we have one person sign up for this, uh, this chat or chatter.
Chatter G.
Yes, come up and have your three minutes, so let's hear what you have.
Hi, my name is Bejoni Chatter G and I'm a local here in Bisbee, I'm a filmmaker, um, my husband and I, my husband, Juan Carlos, he's not here. Uh, we are founders and we run America Productions, we were one of the two people who put up the bid. So, um, the reason I'm here is I'd like to voice my dissatisfaction with the selection process, I don't know all the details, but um, we've been living in Bisbee and San Jose, two miles from Camp Nakco for the last eight years, I mean, um, we've been in the area for eight years, we have a seven-year-old child. We're filmmakers and we have a vast and varied um, portfolio nationally and internationally, combined between my partner and I, we have thirty years of audio/video experience and our productions have been screened at PBS, film festivals, venues across the US and abroad. And some of our documentaries have been, have received funding from Arizona organizations like Arizona Humanities, Arizona Arts, Ford Foundation, et cetera. And I just like to give a little context that will um, shed light on why I um, doubts about the selection process. Uh, so I was introduced to Mr. Brooks Jeffrey, I think he's the teaching consultant for Camp Nakco and we were introduced to him by Becky Roscoe. He invited us and asked us to respond to the RFP. Um, and I, uh, at the open house, I found out that um, Camp Nakco had been working already with Gerald Lamb, who's won the bid um, for the past two years and that they've been very happy with them, so I asked um, Becky Roscoe and Mr. Jeffrey if there was any purpose in applying, because I realized that if you've been working with someone and you have a good working relationship, um, they might want to continue with him, but we were um, we were encouraged to apply. The frankly speaking, the RFP was quite vague, I tried to talk to Mr. Jeffrey a couple of times and um, tried to get some specifics so that our proposal could be uh, competitive. And he said that they were being intentionally vague in the RFP because they wanted to find out what we had to offer, so going by our, you know, past experience, we um, wrote the proposals, a couple of days ago, um, I was made to understand that the budget for the documented, documentation services and the geography was public knowledge, I didn't know that, yet during the process before the deadline for the RFP. Um, I asked Mr. Jeffrey to give us some guidance, because you know, in the world of the geography, it's a big range of um, of pricing. So um, we were not given any, any guidance, and so the budget that we came up with, that you'll see in, in the agenda, is based on us being very cool. That's for three minutes.
That's your three minutes, but.
I just raised it, you know, because we're locals. Uh, there's very little work in this people families, we believe in the Camp Nakco project, so for all these reasons, we were really interested, we live very close by. Uh, we've done, we've been doing a lot of work on our piping, on collecting testimonies of migrants across the border, so we feel that we're um, very well equipped to do this, and so this is the reason why we, you know, the funds, the money that you see is what we suggested in our RFP. Our fee is actually much higher. Um, so these are some of the reasons um, why we feel that the outcome was predetermined. I could be wrong, but this is why we feel that way, we would like to know if the Camp Nakco panel had a, um, rubric or some selection criteria that could be made public as to why the locals of Bisbee did not get this interesting bid. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If, you can turn this to the city attorney, there's a protest and there's a method to that, right?
Right, if you want to file a formal protest, there's a, there's a formal process for doing that in the, in the city, though, because one of the questions will be is, what, what were the criteria that the uh, that they submit, this middle were ranked against, and what were the rankings of the individuals who, who ran those criteria?
So they, well, it's all a matter of public record, you didn't have to request that, maybe, okay, just so you know that.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't hide anything, it's not, this is not done behind closed doors, it is, it's, we have all the paperwork that, so if you come in and say, oh, request it, they can get that for you, and you can decide if you want to do a formal protest. Okay? Um, questions?
Yes. I was wondering too, why there was such a big discrepancy in the, in the two bids, and we didn't have bids in our packet material. Um, but after listening to this family, I have some serious concerns about.
Okay.
And the fact that they may have been working, uh, and I don't know the other gentleman either, but for two years prior, I mean, that's I don't know, I, I just don't like what's wrong.
I now, but I voice, I concur with the, and I just said, uh, I, I would have some concern as well, because we have uh, look at this up to, you know, being in all this, there's some concern from a lot of people about how, how things have have been done, the bidding process, the, the selection process. Um, and uh, I'm not to defend Bejoni, he's been around, known of the years, he are international, they, they, they do a lot for the library, they show, they, they are very involved in the community. And uh, if it was vagueness, what, you were not given the proper chance, I mean, this is not what we are all about here, so we would like a thorough, maybe, and the mayor will, uh, will, will see that we will look at this and, but this is not happening, but we are concerned.
I agree with, with Mel as well, um, we, we should be concentrating, you know, this is a big grant, we need many dollars coming to visit. And most of these people are, who saw, and out of the area, and here we have, you know, call tall people right here, that should have been a consideration of your, this election project.
So I'm gonna make a suggestion that uh, we table this and that we can bring it back to us with all the rating sheets and the background information and what those were, so that it would be on the next uh, fully on the next agenda, so that it's all out there and wide open and you, you know, and any of us that have any questions can, can contact over the next few weeks to the, to the committee here and, and answer those.
There, there will be some information when the bid says confidentially, because until a bid is awarded, some of the, some of the, the supplemental information is confidential, because it, it keeps you from having unfair competition where the other, other people get your detailed information of how you, how they did your bid and stuff like that. But the criteria and the rankings and things like that are part of the scoring, that part definitely is, is something that can be within the pack, but just, just so council's aware of it. You know, when you go out for, when you go out for a proposal for home or a bid and you get some middles, there's some of that detail that's considered proprietary and tilt and a, a contracts awarded, then after the contract's awarded, then it's fine, because you never know if, if the contract doesn't get awarded and you go out to rebid, then you don't want unfairness where, well, everybody has all the detailed information of what.
The original bid, right. Okay, well, I'll ask that you read down whatever it needs to be and we give the information as much as possible and then.
Just one, okay? Uh, and thank you for, for, for doing this. Uh, you know, this, this, any other thing, this is, you know, city of Bisbee, the, and I'm not saying for us, we have to go by law, we have to go with, with the system, but this is supposed to benefit uh, the economy, the locals. And if there's any vagueness, I think we need to make sure that people who, who work here get some clarity, because you know, maybe uh, what Bejoni was just saying, uh, the vagueness, I mean, we, we get this grant, we're all excited about it to benefit the city and to benefit some benefit, I'm not saying for us to overstep the process, but for this to be happening from the beginning, uh, I'm concerned, I'm very concerned and I will keep, keep bringing this up until this is corrected.
I appreciate, uh, Mayor Council, I appreciate their concerns, I will, uh, we get that back, you know, project team.
Yeah, thank you. So I made a motion that we table um, item A, discussion of possible approval to award the consulting services contract uh, at this time.
I second that.
I have a motion in second to table item A, and bring it back at the next council meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Turning now the ayes have it. We do have next item, which is item nine, discussion of possible approval, award of the archaeological consulting services. Tell us about that.
Uh, yes, uh, similar to the documentation, uh, archaeology is funded by the Malogram. And um, uh, and we met with the state historic preservation office in June. Uh, one of the requirements, uh, before we did the major work on site and any uh, work destined for soils, uh, aside from things that were required to mitigate hazards. Uh, required a, a permit from the state museum. Uh, to get that permit, we are required to, uh, became a registered archaeologist to do a site survey, to determine if there are any uh, artifacts uh, on the site, um, and also to develop a procedure for, in the event that we, during uh, earth survey activities, if we encounter any, any artifacts. So uh, we put out a request for proposals with the archaeological service and received three proposals, one for Westland Engineering Environmental Services, one for Aztec Engineering, and one from Desert Archaeology. Uh, again, the project team reviewed all the proposals, uh, and unanimously recommended Desert Archaeology. Uh, their strengths were, uh, that they are uh, more of a focus on the archaeological aspect. Um, and the credentials and the practical understanding, um, that they presented, um, scored higher than the, than the other two.
Hey. Do we have any questions on this? Seeing none, um, these things were very poor, a lot of this. Kind of a select group, we're already gonna get this kind of service out of. Where? Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I speak out my chair.
Yeah, just a couple of additional comments with regard to um, that uh, uh, recommended bidder, uh, the principal of that firm, Bill Doley, uh, has been with the Camp Nakco project since uh, we started ramping up uh, back in the, in the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen era. Um, Desert Archaeology participated in, in the original and in the updated master plan of Camp Nakco that has taken place over, uh, you know, from twenty seventeen to, uh, we just got the final bill for the update today that you approved last December. Um, so, uh, as far as uh, uh, archaeologists are concerned on this particular parcel of historic property, um, we're going to probably get the best service from uh, the firm that knows um, the land already, as well as anybody who's um, uh, actually been out there. Uh, you know, other than perhaps the original builders of the camp themselves, so um, I wasn't involved in, 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 in the selection process, but I can say that uh, from uh, working with Bill in previous iterations, uh, I have uh, supreme confidence in his ability to do the job.
All right, thanks for that. Any further? Take a motion?
I move to approve a ward of the Camp Nakco Archaeological Consulting Service Contract to Desert Archaeology.
Second? Yeah, the motion in a second to approve uh, the proposal to gather archaeology, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose may, turning on the ayes have it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
That. Uh, with that, I'm gonna move to item fifteen, this is a discussion of possible approval of the Bisbee area, area mobility master plan. Megan's here to give a little quick update on where we are on this whole path, it's kind of grown from its original and gotten a little more complicated, but we're working our way through it. Part of the forward-lookingness of this is, uh, you know, which was brought to us before, we tabled it, and back then, they reviewed all of the the IP trails and other things that seem to be upsetting a lot of the local, you know, private property. So this basically is just in with the county and us, and where ultimately with this, then we can go after other grants for planning or funding, so um, if you don't mind, I'll let Megan have a quick little presentation here and, and I'll look up for, for any questions.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, good evening. Um, so, everyone knows me, but for those watching, I'm Megan Connolly with Bisbee Bike Ways. Um, I just wanted to give a little brief update of the project at this point, because it's been a while since we've done so. Uh, so just to remind everyone that Bisbee Bike Ways and the city are working together to implement a network of pathways, um, that will make it easier for people of all abilities to get around on foot and by bike and, of the wheelchair and skating and every, every form you can imagine. Um, at this time, we have received four point five million in funding from the Economic Development Administration and another four million through Congress from grants that because we buy prices written and thanks to the Biden administration, and those are for the construction of the lavender pit. And the lavender pit, just so everyone knows, I keep getting questions about the path, um, it is moving forward, we're currently looking at the IGA with ADOT, um, which is in a draft form right now. Um, negotiations with the state, as you can imagine, are quite complicated and have taken a long time. Um, but we are moving forward and also we've um, have been looking over a proposal from the engineering firm that ADOT recommended. And so at this time tonight, um, the Bisbee Area Mobility Master Plan is on the agenda. Um, this was actually the first phase, the first step that I started, um, and back in twenty eighteen. Um, I first approached reporter, I wanted to try and get the, the um, railroad tracks from Bakerville to Nakco, turned into a surety's path, I was told to contact the county. That developed into a master plan, where the city of Bisbee and Poochies County are working together. Um, so that's what you're looking at tonight, um. And this plan again is going to create a network of pathways for all three districts of Bisbee, not just all Bisbee to Lowell. It would include going down to Nakco, including Camp Nakco, hopefully, um, San Jose, Warren, every area of Bisbee, we're trying to connect in a safe way so that people can get around on foot or on bike, and that's what this master plan is the first step towards. Um, the next step would be to get funding for feasibility study for this entire network. And so that's what I'm working on right now, submitting a couple of grants to get funding for that. Um, so I just wanted to give you a little update and I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Questions? It's been a long time.
Yeah, thank you for the update.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's gotten quite complicated, because now we have, we had to break it into two separate, separate sections. You know, the fact we got two separate grants, we were only have one, yes, sometimes, I thought I grabbed it like, hey, and they go, oh no, because you got both sides of it, but, you know, we're working through all those different issues. Uh, and when it comes to ADOT, it's a lot issue.
Yeah, I think the updated map looks great, you know, the work that you've done, revise that.
Thank you.
We've gone back and forth a few emails, right?
Yes.
Yeah, hopefully, if not, anything you see, you try to update it as best we can and, and uh, make it as current as possible. All right, any uh, other questions or concerns?
Just thank you, Megan, thank you for the work.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Bisbee Area Mobility Master Plan.
I second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the Bisbee Area Mobility Master Plan as presented tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose may, there we go, the ayes have it. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
You betcha. All right. We'll move back now, what is listed as item ten, this is a discussion and bottle pool. You have H R Warren, uh, complete the acoustical assessment of sewer line pipes utilizing some, looks like a little animal, it's a rat. You gotta, we gotta keep it light, guys, a long.
Sometimes.
Okay, Matt, give us a scoop.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, you'll be here tonight, so this, um, we're wanting to work with Art Gordon uh, to utilize this acoustic assessment of our sewer lines, specifically our sewer mains. Um, uh, utilizing, and it's called a uh, a trans, transmissive acoustic inspection rapid assessment technology. That's what the asshole rest stands for. And if I'm wrong, uh, I am, uh, I'm sorry. Colton, Colton, he's going to be, uh, doing a short little presentation to give you guys idea of what this is. Uh, so you know what we're looking at and the benefits of that this will bring us in our, our sewer collection system. Um, so, Colton, why don't you come up? Um, we're gonna be doing a presentation with uh, and is that gonna be?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to work, I'm gonna show the screen right now, one of the people's up here talking.
Yeah, thanks again for having me tonight, appreciated that. Who invented this? Um, so this is invented by a company called InfoSense, uh, back in Charlotte, North Carolina. Um, so this technology, I'll go into the background real quick while we're pulling this up. Um, this technology was invented back in two thousand and eight. Uh, the city of Charlotte, North Carolina was, uh, under consent order from the EPA, because they had too many SSLs or overflows in their collection system.
And for those.
Yeah. And so, um, their options on the table were hire additional crew, buy additional, you know, half-million-dollar vehicles and continue to try to clean the system, for those who are not familiar with how to maintain a collection system for the sewer. Um, it's typically done with jet trucks, tractor trucks, where the, the teams will go out and clean line by line um, throughout the city, and their typical game plan is every three to five years, you'll clean everything in the entire system regardless of condition, regardless of where the issues lie. Um, so Ashley, are you good to put through this?
Yeah.
So what this technology allows us to do, instead of going down that traditional path, it helps us transition cities and municipalities to a more proactive model, a condition-based model, if you will, um, so if you'll go ahead and jump to the next one.
Sure.
Oh, that's okay, um. This is just a little background on us, we, we currently work with over a hundred and fifty municipalities across the western United States and in the south as well. Um, specifically in Arizona, we work with anywhere from about thirty to forty cities each year. Um, but go ahead and jump to the next one if you would, and I need one more, it's just beginning. So like I said, the traditional model for most cities, though, this has been done for the last sixty, seventy years, is that you take a cleaning truck, you go and deploy it, you either work north to south, east to west, but you move in sections at a time, cleaning, most of the time, clean pipe. Right, there's several pipes that'll build up over time, there's, that's how we get backups, is buildups will occur over time. But our crews clean everything, because they don't have a X-ray vision, right, they don't know where to go clean. So this tool helps us to kind of overcome that, that shortcoming and that inefficiency. Okay, go ahead and go on to the next one. So, the issues with this, we're not, we're cleaning every pipe segment regardless of condition. Uh, the crews normally are not able to view the whole system every year, so there could be brewing problems that don't get seen for three years, depending on where they're at in the rotation of the cleaning cycle. It also requires a significant amount of water to clean each and every line, um, so we can avoid just washing away our water for unnecessary reasons, we want to do that. And it only also cuts down on the expenses on the trucks, so high emissions, uh, repairs, these trucks are really expensive. See, I don't know, are you guys fully equipped with a tractor truck, or you just have?
Yes, we have one.
Yeah, those are typically upwards of half a million dollars to get those in-house, so any repairs on that, even the fuel alone on those is highly expensive.
Small one, we're on full set.
Okay, yeah, so I'm sure that one's still effective. Um, okay, go ahead and jump to the next one. Um, and go ahead, go one more down, so this is just showing, we're trying to be the bridge, um, to help get you guys from a time-based approach to a condition-based approach. Um, I won't go over the, the story again, but this is, since two thousand and eight, this is now recommended by the EPA. Um, this holds ASTM standards and has been approved by many different, um, organizations in the wastewater world. Um, it's been used by hundreds of utilities worldwide and internationally as well. Um, go ahead and go down to the next one. So this is just a brief summary of what we're doing, so on the left-hand side, you have a transmitter. And when we say acoustics, that's what we mean, we literally mean we're using sound to understand what's going on in our pipes. So we have a transmitter on one end that is sending a series of tones from low to high pitches and it's communicating to a partner device, the receiver on the opposite manhole downstream. And what it's determining is in a clear pipe, it'll work similar to a musical instrument, that pipe should carry sound normally, it should carry the flow of sound. And if there's obstructions occurring in that pipe segment, it's gonna degrade and distort that sound wave, so that by the end of the, the cycle, the device will be able to determine how much the sound was distorted in its, uh, process from point A to point B, if that makes sense. The, the real value behind this is this takes eight seconds to accomplish, so with this technology, the cleaning trucks can go out and get roughly two thousand to three thousand feet a day, this technology can go out and get twenty to thirty thousand feet a day. So when we assess cities, instead of waiting two to three years, we look at the entire system, our company can come and assess the town of Bisbee in about a month. So it's an extremely fast approach to maintaining sewer system and pinpointing exactly surgically where we need to go clean, instead of just cleaning the entire system. Um, go ahead and go on to the next one.
Just help map it, do, or?
Yeah, we're gonna get that, absolutely, so.
My dad was a physics teacher.
Okay, okay, now you, now you're going the right direction, so what we have here, this is a scale, so however anxious it is, it brings it on a score from zero to ten, zero meaning zero sound travel through that pipe, no sound was recorded. It's either a fully blocked pipe or there's a structural issue that it's going with. Um, all the way up to a score of ten, which is perfectly clear, sound travel just fine. This pie chart on the right, this is the national average, this has been done on hundreds of millions of feet of pipe at this point. And any given system across the nation, the national average is that seventy-two percent of that system is clean. And any given system across the nation, the national average is that seventy-two percent of that system is clean. So when we're out there with our cleaning trucks, there's been a lot, not just you guys, the entire nation, there's been a lot of pipes that have been cleaned unnecessarily. Because we're trying to go after blockages and we're trying to go after buildup that's occurring. It's that eleven percent and that seventeen percent, and if we could just pinpoint that and narrow it down, it would help the crews be more efficient. It would help save us time and money and water. We'll go to the next one. So this is the simple approach, um, the byproduct of this is a GIS map. So we have all the, the lines identified and outlined based on their performance, um, they're color coded, so blocks. A score of zero comes up as black, anything from one to three comes up as red, which is four. And then if you'll jump to the next one. Um, this is a demo of a finished product, can you click the play button on this slide? It's probably right where Steve's name is. Or if you scroll down a little bit more. Here just a time.
Oh, damn one?
Uh, no, it's not into that slide, this must be just the. Okay, this is just. Okay, that's all right, so go ahead and scroll back up just a little bit. So, one thing you'll be able to do is have the, the full system mapped out based on the performance of pipe. Um, this, this data we host this map for you, but we also can transfer the shape file to you. So as your system becomes more um mature and you bring in GIS. This, we can transfer this map to you, so you can have it in your own space. Public Works can do multiple different things, they can add additional layers, they can add additional infrastructure to this map over time. Um, but for. A decent amount um of the rural cities that we've worked with in Arizona, we have been their first, their first line of a, a GIS map. Converted them from old nineteen seventies paper maps to something that's digital and online. Um, it'll give you stats, if we, if we could play this, it'll give you all the stats of how much footage is assessed. So it'll give you numbers like how much footage is in your entire city, which is helpful to know how many manholes are in your city. Uh, if we scroll down, um. We also include in this service. Since, since the process requires us to lift every single manhole lid. We'll also provide a level one visual inspection of the manhole with uh recorded documents such as photographs. Rankings of each uh individual piece of the asset, so lid, the collar. Uh, the bench, the channel, things like that, the structure. We all rate it on a good merit force system, and if you scroll one more down. Unfortunately, this won't have, um, if there was a video, we can play it. But we have layer lists right here, where if we click on each layer list, it will pop up, populate the, all the mammals in the given system. Based on how they rated, uh, let's say for instance, the lid condition, so. We can look at all one thousand or nine hundred, however many mammals we have. We can then easily filter through and see, oh, we have twenty-seven bad lids in the city that we need to be replaced. So it's very easy for Matt to go after, you know, different. Funding and whatever, and have very specific reasoning why we're going after this funding, we have twelve manhole lids that we need to replace. This is why we're using it, and it, it will have all that documented, so we can see just how the city system is performing. Um. Trying to do. Go ahead and scroll down one more, just. Yeah, so this is, this is where I leave it, I don't want to take too much time, I know you guys had a long night. Um. But the slide illustrates what we've been able to do for other cities and systems. We're able to scale down the cleaning, the maintenance, frees up the crews to do other activities besides clean all day. Um, they reduce the cleaning typically by fifty to eighty percent. Um, also, they remove more debris from the system in the same process, because we're actually going where the problem is occurring, we're not just cleaning clean pipes. We use typically eighty to ninety percent less water as the crews cut down on how many lines they clean, they're saving that water. Um, and it again frees up the resources, so our crews and teams have more ability to get to other tasks that are involved. Um, I'll turn it over to questions again, I really appreciate the time given, thank you.
Right, I have one quick question.
Yeah.
Putting this noise down, does it radiate out into people's homes?
I get that question every time. We've only ever heard of that happen maybe twice. Yeah, so typically if their, if their pipes are operating correctly, uh, there should be something in place that it's gonna not allow the sound to occur.
Feature of that keeps the.
Yeah. Exactly. It's a semi pleasant sound, so it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world to hear that. Yeah. Um, any, any additional questions, Paul?
My question will be, I think to Matt, I think, uh, so basically, this is the first time we're doing this?
Yes.
Uh, and in the, the old days, what did you do? But, but this, did you have?
We didn't, we went out and they used to just wash the, the lines.
But you didn't do it like, you did it like on a, on a regular basis, or when, when there's a problem that you did, I just want to understand.
It used to be, uh, where we had, um. Where they would go out on a consistent basis, and I, we used to have one of our guys that would go out, and that was his job, he went out and washed. And went like, started from Old Bisbee, went all the way down and cleaned all of the Bisbee, went to Warren, went to Galena. Then he would go through, pop the manholes, flush, flush the lines, yes.
And down with this, basically, you will come up with the information and then you can go and see where, where the problem is.
Another thing with this is, we have, we spend so much time in our historic district. Uh, we're hardly in some of our other areas, and so with that. We don't know the conditions of some of these other manholes, and so this, we don't have to go out and do this, their teams do go out and do this, so we can. Continue to um, to do our, the rest, what the guys are doing on a daily basis. So this really gives us an eye for uh what, what's really going on in some of these other areas that we're not able to spend a lot of time on.
Okay, did you jump up then, and you began this with another town, and how successful is this?
Um, yeah, so we've been in, in operations in state of Arizona for three years now. Um, the closest to you would be, that's currently doing it is Sierra Vista. Okay, we're actually gonna be out there hopefully next week if procurement goes through. Um, and then we've had si- systems in Utah that have been on this. Well, it depends how you want to structure it, this, we, we typically recommend doing this on some sort of. Frequent cadence, whether it's an annual, by, or maybe every couple of years. But some form of cadence, because things will change over time, but for those that we've seen come through multiple times. Um, we have many systems in Utah that were just started. We've had many systems that have just tracked their improvement over time, and they've really, that pie chart I showed at the beginning, where they had, you know, maybe seventy-five percent of the system is good. Well, in year two, when we come back and reassess, they've shrunk that to eighty percent, or. Run that to eighty percent, if you will, and then again ninety percent, so systems, we could provide references and lists if you like, um. Systems like, that are comparable sized to you would be, uh, City of Cottonwood, City of Camperdine, Low Cox, um.
Now, okay, so these towns have already done this. Thank you.
Okay. You know, I just have, it, this is really interesting technology, yes.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
No, I think this is.
Yes, we just need to use the information.
Benefits, so we're, we're getting a lot out of this, we get, they see, they check our manholes, they will. We let, we know where the bad points are, we also get the GIS, which we don't have. The maps that we have are not always a hundred percent accurate, so we're like, I think it should be, the sewer land should be over here. Or, you know, this will be, this is where it is, nothing, yeah, thank you.
Let's aim on the dying.
And we won't have as much water bills as the Vista, because that's where we fill up our tractor truck, so.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, just one question for the vendor, um. We talked about sewer blockages and how you can control those with this thing. Uh, other things take up residence in the system, uh, some are reptiles, some are mammals. Um, some, some take up residence for quite a while and, and wind up coming to the surface in the darnedest places. Um, how much do you expect this one, this, this system of doing things? Uh, to, to clean out any nesting facilities or, or living quarters for uh mammals and, and reptiles?
Well, that's a good question, that's interesting. Um, anything that we can document on what our findings are, we will, uh, we've. We've actually notated for several cities, um, manhole, we've put on feature layers in that GIS map. Um, here, sorry. Um, so for some, some instances, we've recorded um significant roach populations, they want to be aware of. Um, significant rod populations, also rodent as well, they want to be ident- uh notified if they're. Were rodents present in the, the manholes themselves, so when we record that, we'll capture that um in a data format, that's pretty easy to. To sift through and find different locations if we do come across that.
Okay, thank you, because I consider that at least partially a public health issue as well.
Yeah, and with that, if we get, sometimes we get concerns. Uh, about roaches, not, and we can go out and we, we have the stuff that we can put down, this bait stuff, put down in the manhole to help with that.
Okay, thank you.
One other question, we, you have to get seals from the top of the manhole, so we don't get water infiltration. That those will be put back in as they redo every one of these.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of those, but yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, most of what we have is the uh, the inlet covers and under the manholes that keep all the water going in.
Yeah.
That's what we have a lot of.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Then a motion.
I move to approve to have R E's board complete an acoustic assessment of the sewer line pipes utilizing SLRAT.
Uh, we have a vote to second. Usually SLRAT, to do some acousticals, that's. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close name, the ayes have it, thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you.
We're a fun town, okay.
Hey, I, I like this.
All right, uh, we'll just jump right along with our public work stuff, so the next one will be. Item eleven. Discussion about approval to have K E and G pave Adams Avenue, as well as Bill and Dave Garden Avenue. You're back up.
All right, hey, come here, council again. Uh, so we have uh these two roads, uh, that we've been wanting to pave. Uh, we tried to pave um Garden Avenue last year, and we had uh major concerns with the drainage. Uh, if we added a, a layer of asphalt on top, we were worried about houses being flooded. So in order to pave this road, which it needs, uh, we need a miller to fill it with asphalt, uh, that's something that. Our city workers, we don't have the, the ability to do that, so we're, uh, K and G has the machinery to do this job. So we're asking that we utilize K and G for that, and Adams um Avenue is a road that. Um. Let's just say, it, it's a very rough road, very long road, and it's been needing um some asphalt for quite a while. Uh, it's very long, so that's another thing, uh, I don't feel comfortable with our crews doing that long of a road. Um, and up there, um, because it's also on a close, so K and G is very skilled. Uh, and can manage this probably both of these projects uh better than our, our. People can, yes.
Um. The bridge, they gotta go over Lou Canyon, how are they gonna do that, get the apps, with the weight?
That's something we're gonna have to look at.
And that's always been the.
Yeah.
That, that's on our to-do list, that's one of the bridges.
They have uh some capability to lay down some very large uh. Yeah, we'll begin with K and G on that and see what they can come up with.
Don't want one of their trucks in our drainage.
No, yeah. Yeah.
I know, maybe, maybe we should wait till the bridge.
Uh, we, yeah, that's, we did get approval for that bridge anyways, oh.
Just you guys working on, that's what I was.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I know people have never, they can't get a cement truck.
That'll be definitely one of the first things we'll be looking at.
Any else?
Um, just a procedural question.
Yes.
Uh, are we, we don't get bids, we just go directly to K, K and G now on all of these?
K and G is under our, the safe cooperative contract that we have.
Okay.
Uh, so yes.
So we just need to, I just need.
Yeah, they're under our safe, the same, safe, safe.
Uh, and since you're talking about paving, this is my chance, when are we gonna take care of the streets and warn, and several of the.
My guys are finishing with Chuppa Terrace.
Okay.
Doing some edge work, uh, and then we have a couple of small, little tiny projects, and we're.
You move there?
Yes, sir.
Ask that question every day.
Yes. You'll be seeing this. You'll be seeing the guys soon.
Okay, good.
Um, another thing was, I believe that Garden has. Speed belts, right?
Yes.
So, are, are they gonna go back in, or are we gonna put these ones where like we're doing?
Uh, no, yeah, we'll, we'll, um.
You have to work with K and G.
Yeah, we'll work with K and G, because we are going to be doing a, an inverted uh road, so the water drain in the middle.
That's what I was gonna say.
So that, well, yeah, this will be.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be working with K and G on that.
Just another, the one, but have it back here. All right, um. I'd say, I was approved to have the K E and G pave Adams Avenue, Avenue as well as Bill and Dave Garden Avenue.
Second.
A motion of second. K E and G Adams and Garden, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name, very none, the ayes have it. Um, we got three more here, uh. Nine and twelve, special possible approval to have Westland Resources update the preliminary engineering report. For the Old Bisbee Sewer Lateral Rehabilitation Project. That's another.
This is another big thing, um, so speaking of sewer lines and uh Old Bisbee taking up a lot of our time, so this is, um. A, Westland, we're asking to have Westland update the, our previous, um. Per- preliminary engineering report, uh, we did receive a USDA grant of twenty-seven thousand. Um, it doesn't cover the full thing, which it, the full uh proposal uh scope, which is a hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Uh, we do have this budgeted in our grant budget of, to, to cover this one hundred and seven. Actually, the, the physical impact after the twenty-seven is eighty thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Uh, so this will include. Um. In- including Zacateus Canyon into the scope, before, in the, in the previous scope, that wasn't in this project. Uh, we've talked with USDA, uh, we talked about different parts of Old Bisbee and uh Zacateus Canyon were brought up. And so USDA said, hey, uh, if you go further and include those, we can in, in, increase. The cost for, for paying for that as well, so that was one of the things uh that is changing in this update. We'll be including that, we will also be including not just our sewer public laterals. Which is what we're responsible for, this will be including going up to the dwellings. Uh, or the homes, I should say, uh, and not just, just the public park, because USDA said. Well, is the public side of the public, uh, sorry, the private laterals, uh, just as bad condition as your guys, I'm like. Yeah, they're built in the same, same time period, so like, well, if you. Again, if you include this in your scope, we'll include it in, in higher, and do a higher grant. Um, for you guys, if you can do that, so this is really good, it's not just public laterals, and then. Our residents are stuck with old sewer classes, includes all of our sewer levels. In, in Old Bisbee.
Yeah, we needed it.
No, this, like I said before, with our other, um, pro- uh, project with, uh, all right. Um. Old Bisbee takes up a lot of our time, our collections time, because we have a lot of overflows. Uh, a lot of backups, we're constantly up in Old Bisbee all the time.
This doesn't replace the line, this studies it so we can go after the grant.
Yes, this is just to get us to where we can go to the big grant, uh, and get that, yes.
Just make that clear.
Okay, it just on the cost, you said, we're getting the twenty-seven thousand grant from USDA, nine-five thousand match per day. And then the remaining cost will go on future construction grant, and you're saying. The, the leftover from the eighty thousand will, will be coming from future grant, is that what you meant?
Yes, from the main grant that we get from USDA.
Okay.
We'll be able to backcharge that onto that.
Okay, sir, okay, that's.
Yeah, we're, uh, US.
Yes, uh go ahead.
Thank you, just just to be clear, um what Matt's talking about here is uh is doing the preliminary engineering report. Okay, um this has been on the books, uh well, Teresa Coleman was the city manager. Uh when uh when we first started talking to USDA about this. And uh it got knocked around for quite a while, and uh now it it seems. Um that they're uh going to allow us that twenty seven thousand dollars that uh they had already granted to. Teresa to uh do the P E R. So um so this is really a very minor part of. What Matt's talking about when we're talking about uh the sewer lateral projects, we're uh. Uh we're simultaneously working with USDA to attempt to obtain. Uh a multi-million dollar grant to actually do the construction, okay? Um while I know that sometimes we talk in very optimistic terms about. Uh who's gonna give us money and for what, uh this is a dog eat dog competition. Uh but we don't get anything without a P E R. So uh so we have to do this in order to compete. For the grant, but I don't want anybody to uh have any mistaken notions that that makes the the next level automatic. It does not.
There you go, brother. Just a comment, will the info system, uh what we're gonna, would that be helpful as well, since even doing acoustic? Would they, would the lines, would the speed also additional, maybe if we find, I mean, just a question, I mean.
I think it will.
It will have, if you have that information.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it would aid uh in in the process.
Yeah.
I think it'll cut down on some engineering time.
Yeah.
At least you know where the mains are, this is all about laterals.
Yeah.
At least you know where where he got.
Yeah, these are those slow lines, yeah.
All right, um any other questions? Comments? Take a motion. And well.
I move to approve to have Westland Resources update preliminary engineering report. For the Old Bisbee Sewer Lateral Rehabilitation Project. Second.
Another motion to second. To approve Westland Resources, cause with preliminary engineering report for sewer lateral. All those in favors, signify by saying aye. Oh, Slane. We're none, the eyes have it. All right, moving on, thirteen is the discussion possible through the purchase nine speed cushions for speed mitigation on West Boulevard. Hey, Master.
Thank you again. Uh so this uh is in reference to the uh. Sorry, I'm trying to figure the uh told we was brought to council for West Boulevard uh for the speeding. And so this was to mitigate uh that speeding. This is. A seven foot uh speed cushion, seven foot deep. Uh this allows, but they're not all across the road. Uh this allows for emergency vehicles to pass around them, uh cause their their wheel stand is wider, so they don't have to. Go over top of them, they can go around them with these. So that's one of the big uh thing that we were looking at, uh that wouldn't. Hinder emergency services.
This, so are somebody's gonna be in the county or just all city?
This will be on the city only. Yeah, really on the city. This will allow us to have three sections of speed cushions. Yes, sir. Uh this will uh calm the traffic to the desired twenty five mile an hour speed limit. Uh without, yeah, like I said, without impacting the emergency response time. And. So the total cost to purchase the nine speed cushions with hardware will be eight thousand and forty, eight thousand dollars and forty six dollars. These are removable, so if we get to a point where, you know, we wanna make this um. To stay there, we can actually put in asphalt and remove these and use these these other places if we need to make this a more permanent. Um speed hops if we if the, if we fill that is needed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um as council will recall, when the residents of West Boulevard came up. Uh to speak with council a few council meetings ago, um uh Matt Logan and I and the county's uh chief engineer. Uh met with them a couple of days later to come up with this as an experimental uh method of. Of uh seeing if the problem was solvable. Using uh using speed bumps of of some type. Um Jackie Watkins, the chief engineer, I actually recommended this particular device. Uh because she felt that it was uh gentle enough. Uh that it wouldn't be jarring or uh or possibly cause. Uh people to lose control of their vehicles or to compromise emergency equipment. And so uh we went out and shopped uh for those devices, and this is what we came up with. Uh the the main feature about this, I think, is that uh if it is determined. Not to be uh effective in this particular application, they are removable. Uh they are portable and they can be reused in other roads if we so desire. So. Uh however, uh based on the assessment that we got of the road. Uh and and we also did get a traffic and speed count, uh courtesy of Cochise County. Um we feel that this should be a pretty good um method of controlling the issue. So. Uh I I would recommend that we go forward with this wholeheartedly.
Hey, questions?
Not a question, don't comment. Thank you for taking the emergency vehicles into consideration there when you were looking at this. I appreciate that very much.
Yes, man, that's one thing we're, one of the things that came up that we're worried about. Our little garbage truck just goes up there.
I'd like to say the uh residents of West Bull are being very appreciative.
Yes, we've been in communication with them, letting them know, hey, we found some, whatever you take from council, so we've been in communication with them.
Well, I want you guys. I move to approve purchase nine speed cushions for West Boulevard Road.
Second. All right, we got board one with a. Motion in a second to approve nine speed cushions to install them with Boulevard. Always made it signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, Slane, there are none, the eyes have it. So we have, we have two more. Next one is a discussion possible approval to pursue legal action against coin vendor. Or the police department challenge points. Go ahead, let the chief.
So um we've been having uh some issues with the coin vendor or. The the police department ordered uh some challenge points from a a vendor that we normally do business with. And that was. Remind me, chief, that last year or was that December of last year, right? Started that year, then mine is March, April. So order challenge points and bad and and patches, we think. The vendor claims that there's been delay issues and things with with their supply company in. In China or where their sourcing material. We've asked repeatedly for either provide us with the coins or give us a refund, uh because doing on. Ten, eleven months is unacceptable, uh even with shipping delays. Uh I've seen other departments order and receive coins in in a much shorter period of time. Uh the response has been, we're we're trying to work through these issues. Uh all sales are final, there is no recourse. And my response to that is, yes, sir, is uh but. As as council controls uh the the legal actions for the for the city. Um I need to request permission uh to be able to pursue that. My. My goal would be to try to have another conversation with the with the the owner of the. Small business uh to see if we can get this resolved. Otherwise, my suggestions. That we can take this to small claims court, file an action locally. And uh seek to get a judgment to reimburse the city for the the cost these points that we've paid for. And just start, we're not getting them, we're not getting any legitimate responses from from the company other than. Uh we we've been trying to work this out with the with the supplier and my response to that is, it's okay. We're well past that that period of time for any type of reasonable um accommodation for supplier issues.
Anybody questions?
Uh I don't know. Yeah, how much is the amount, how much we talking about?
Uh we're talking about just under twenty five hundred dollars, I think.
That was the total order.
Eleven, yeah, it's it's a small claims action.
How much will it cost us to?
Oh, like ten fifteen thousand.
That's my question, I mean, how much it gonna cost versus what, you know?
No, there.
Yeah, yeah, but.
So they are.
Let's squeeze him.
Yeah. I can put together, in in the small claims action, super simple, it's.
Okay.
You know, I can let you do it. I I I would think less than a few hundred dollars.
Okay, as long as you say that.
And we also would request, because this is a a. A dispute that arises out of contract or written invoice, that we would request attorney's fees uh as a providing party as well. So it could. Maybe, you know, fifteen hundred dollars for the coins plus whatever the the attorney's fees are, but. This this one of my my things is, no, you you don't spend five thousand dollars going after fifty.
Exactly, that's why I wanted to know how much was the amount, okay.
All right, that's why, again, the 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 preferred method is to. Have a conversation with the owner and say, look, the the council said enough is enough. They've authorized me to to initiate legal action. Let's get this taken care of, refund, just give us a refund. And if the coins come in. Then contact us and we in person with that one. At a discount price.
This is what we learned. Comments? There you go. Take a motion to. Anybody?
I move to pursue legal action against the coin vendor for the police department challenge points.
Second.
A motion of second to pursue legal action. Uh for the police challenge department or chief, police department challenge points, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, Slane. There are none, you guys have it. Uh I run here. All right, let's go on to seventeen. This will be, no, I'm sorry, sixteen. Discussion of possible approvals of the contract agreement between the city Bisbee and Step Up Bisbee Naco. For the owner occupied housing real rehabilitation C G B G funds. I'm glad you hung in there.
Thank you, uh and good evening. Um I am so happy to bring you really good news about the Saginaw area. That we are, we have awarded the contract to step up Bisbee Naco, a nonprofit locally that. That's gonna perform the work at fifteen thousand per home. We are ready to go in six homes. Um the response from the homeowners has been amazing, because we've had. When you have a state project, you have paper after paper after paper that they must sign. We do have one more to uh. Something from the city for them to sign, but um we're moving forward, step up. Bisbee Naco is ready to go. We contacted everyone, we still qualifying individuals. We should have all fifteen. I'm gonna go out on a limb and say we're gonna be done by December.
Wow, all fifteen?
They're moving, they're able to move fast. They've done the assessments, they've um since we um awarded it, they've they've ordered in bulk. We've gone over the billing.
Maybe they can build city hall.
So I'm asking for approval tonight of the contract to step up Bisbee Naco, which is a C D B P contract to um perform the. Renovations.
Thank you.
Questions? Uh from what I read here, just this for six homes.
Yeah, ninety thousand dollars for for five homes and part of the.
Six homes.
Six homes and each one, and then there'll be an additional six.
Okay, but what we are proving tonight for the six homes?
Yes, we're hoping that the state won't require us to come back with a second R and P for all of this. We're working on that. Directly with them now. We have enough money to do fifteen, which is two hundred and fifty thousand, so.
Okay, uh great news, and I bet they're happy and testing for some of the new new roofs and window kind of. Installation and windows, right?
Electrical windows, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think it's doing great.
It's good, good job, thank you.
Thanks, Seago also as part of our.
Yes, it was Seago writes the grant we employ.
All right, um motion for the last one.
I move to approve the contract on Step Up Bisbee Naco for the owner occupied housing rehabilitation C D B G number one three four dash two three.
A second.
And a motion of second to approve contract with Step Up Bisbee Naco. For the owner occupied housing re- rehabilitation program. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, Slane, there are none. I was sort of sweet and thank you so much for all the work.
Yeah, thank you.
And. Over to sick, you know, I'm over to the city manager there. How are you doing?
At Camp Naco Quarantine Facility. Uh just a uh 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 a personal word, uh unfortunately, I I came home from. Uh the the uh conference uh with uh uh with, well, with COVID. Uh I'm very happy to see all of you there, because everybody but Frank was there too, so. Uh that means that the the bug was a little more selective maybe this time, so. Unfortunately, I got it this year, uh mayor and his wife got it last year. Um but I'm gonna test again in the morning, I'm hoping, I mean, I I felt pretty good the last couple of days, but. Um you know, but I can't, I I can't argue with the test. So anyway, hopefully tomorrow morning will be all good. Um a couple of things, the 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 first item um uh as is on on your uh agenda. Uh we have worked out a schedule uh for uh the recruitment process. Uh for a city manager and uh I'm I'm assuming that Joel has provided you with that information already. Is that correct? Oh, okay, well, I can't talk about it until you have it. Okay, so um now that you have it, I'll just walk through it really quick, uh cause, cause you can all read it as fast as I can tell you. Um we plan to start the advertising process this week. Um and uh we we normally advertise in publications. Uh that city manager candidates uh look to um. For uh for the open positions and and that uh for us is, the the best ones are. Uh the I C M A website along with the A C M A. Uh website, A C M A, of course, is part of the the league. And uh so. Um that's where most of our feedback came from. We did. Uh advertise in LinkedIn the last time. Uh I threw a tease out last night. Uh on LinkedIn, uh it it got a lot of responses. Uh people are looking for information, whether or not we actually spend money advertising on LinkedIn or just put it out. Um you know, uh on on uh various people's memberships. Uh remains to be seen, cause the past results haven't been, uh LinkedIn's um self-promotion. Is a lot more effective than the hits that I've gotten over the years on those things, so. Um we're looking to uh start on the seventh, we're looking to. Close the submission on nine twenty eight, okay? Um and then um we will have gone through and screened applicants by uh October ninth. And then the staff will narrow the selections to all qualified applicants, okay? Now, when I say all qualified applicants. Um I mean people who actually have a resume and uh and hopefully some actual experience working in municipal government. Okay, um every time I've ever done this, um we get some really interesting, the local hardware store manager. Um who who is, uh you know, probably a perfectly qualified person, they just not in municipal government necessarily. So so we will do that screening uh at the staff level and then um. We will uh ask you. Um, we will uh ask you to. Um, narrow down by the seventeenth of October. Uh, to two or three, if if you if you absolutely have to interview four people, that's all good. Um, in fact, the first time I interviewed for this job, uh, you interviewed four of us. Um, it was an extremely long day, but we got it all in and uh. And we expect that format of moving forward to uh go in similar fashion. So, uh, you're looking at probably um a special session for review of the applicants. So that you can um pick the ones you want to interview. Uh, and then communicate uh those names to us so that we can start setting up the interview process. Um, now, one thing to keep in mind is until we name finalists. These these resumes are considered confidential under state law. Okay, we do not have to reveal the names of every candidate. Uh, but once they become finalists, once you determine who the finalists are. Then those become public, okay? Then they can be published in the newspaper, on Facebook, anywhere you want to to put them, so. Uh, that it's important in the in the process to maintain that degree of confidentiality until. Uh, it uh it it until legally, uh, we we have names that we can make public, so. Um, we'll be doing background checks during that same period of time. Um, and uh, you know, I don't know that the schedule for background checks. Is important except to say that they will be completed in time uh to schedule interviews. Uh, which we have scheduled at this point for November, the week of November sixth. Okay, so first week in November, uh, that's an important uh. That's an important week. Uh, and uh, we will want to make our schedules available for that. Um, now, um, uh, just a word here, um, if you want to. Be part of the selection process, you will need to clear your schedule, okay? Um, if, you know, all of a sudden you decide you wanna go to Aruba that week. Um, and you don't get in on the selection process, then. Uh, you you can't come back later and 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 argue about the selection that the rest have made. Uh, so it's very important that all seven elected officials be a part of this process. It is. Only truly uh right if everybody has their say. Okay, whether you win or lose or not, but hopefully you'll come to a consensus and that won't be a problem. But you need to all be there, so please keep that week available. Um, we're going to. Um, use a similar format to what you're used to in the past. Uh, we'll do some interviews with uh community uh. Community partners will do some interviews, um, if you want, um. Uh, uh, in in small groups, um, we will uh. Start the day probably, uh, we'll we'll talk to Joy Timber again and see if we can start the day. With candidates over uh with breakfast at at the C and A guest house and. We will also uh hopefully have Public Works and or the Fire Department uh uh help transport. Candidates around town uh to give them a look at Bisbee as only they can. And uh so they can see what kind of a community they would uh conceivably want to work in, so. Uh, and of course, we'll, you know, we'll encourage them to come early if they want to and and and. Uh, you know, do some checking on their own, maybe stop at Bisbee Bodega and buy a pack of cigarettes.
That's not how it'll work.
Well, we're we're kinda hoping that we don't get any smokers too, but Mel, you'll let us know. Um. Um, so anyway, um, now, um. Uh, I'm, I'm I'm gonna give you a real optimistic scenario here, and then I'm gonna give you what I think is 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 more likely to occur. Um, Joel and I talked about this and we are going to encourage, uh, because I've seen this happen several times already. Um, people will say the interview's on Tuesday, okay? They'll fly in on Monday. They'll spend the day on Tuesday and they'll have a seven or an eight o'clock flight booked out of Tucson to go home on Wednesday, okay? Um. If you all can come up with the consensus on Tuesday night, which has happened. Um, I I'm gonna encourage the candidates, the finalists. To uh book later flights in the day so that if you wish. We can bring uh a candidate you identify in for the beginning of the negotiating process, okay? Um, Anna, you're the only one who was around when when I was hired originally. Um, uh, Mayor called me at nine thirty at night and asked me if I could come in in the morning. And uh, I I met with uh him and uh the city attorney and a couple of council members at eight o'clock the next morning. And at nine o'clock, we had an agreement. Okay, uh, that's the most optimistic way of doing things, okay? But uh, I've discovered that. Over the years, both personally and with other uh recruitments, that it's either gonna work or it isn't, okay? Um, and uh, there's there's another community in Arizona that I handled with for. Eight weeks and I finally decided if I can't get an agreement in eight weeks to work for the co- for the city, uh, it probably won't be a real smooth ride. So I'm look, that's what I'm looking for, um, but yet we're we're putting a week in here. Uh, for once you've identified a top candidate that we can negotiate. Terms of the agreement and I I'm, I I don't know about you all. Uh, but I like to sit across the table with people when I'm negotiating with them. It just makes it a whole lot more real. Uh, and and I think in many ways it makes it uh go a lot more quickly. And I think uh, having been around uh for the last recruitment process. Um, in in a similar fashion to where I am now. Um, I I think that troubled the process more than in that it facilitated the process, so. Um, and as you recall, uh, the person you identified as the top candidate was not the one who you eventually hired. So, so anyway, um, that's kind of what our thinking process is on there. Um, we have put a tentative starting date of one eight twenty twenty four. Uh, for a starting date, um, several reasons for that. Uh, number one, um, trying to start somebody in December, uh, we're just fooling ourselves, uh. You know, once you get to about the fifteenth of December, everything pretty much stops. And uh, so I would rather not bring somebody on board um during the holiday season. And so, um, I'm, and of course, uh, you know, subject to no objection on your part, that's the what we'll aim for. Second reason for that is uh most contracts, including the ones that you negotiate with city managers. Uh, ask for your city manager to give you sixty days notice. Uh, if 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 they resign, okay? So, um, if we offer somebody a job in November, then. And 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 they are working for another city, subject to that same sixty day notice provision on their contract with their soon to be. Uh, former employer, we need to, we need to be able to honor that. Uh, and not not put that candidate in a untenable position. Uh, that could cause them to leave under circumstances that would be less than ideal, so. Uh, so that's the schedule, and at this point, I'll entertain any questions that uh Joel can answer for you.
One thing I would. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, and this is up for discussion, but. I think. One, we're gonna have some interviews with local stakeholders, but maybe a meeting greet with all of them. We did that. If I remember right on it. Just someone else, so we invite that open and I don't know what we're gonna do, but we'll figure a place, well. You know, they don't have a city of all of them, we'll figure it out, so.
Was right there the last time.
Yeah, okay, anyway, that's one I might see scheduled in there with that, so. We'll get it in there then. Hey, any else?
Uh, my question, are we gonna use the any agencies for vetting? I mean, before we. Uh, are we just, you just gonna do do advertising? Or we're gonna look at maybe a recruitment agency that can maybe help us? Cause sometimes I know some, yes, sir.
Since you, since you still have me. And you still, and you have a professional H R director uh working for you. Um, uh, I, my personal belief is is that that totally null null nullifies the need for a thirty to forty thousand dollar. Uh, recruiting firm to do the same thing. Um, I also have maybe a couple of biases, but I think also some. Uh, real good reasons not to use a recruitment firm. Uh, uh, among the first things is, um, they will. They will cost you a lot of money, okay? Uh, they will normally take a lot more time. Um, the vetting process is totally up to us. Uh, I mean, we have standard methods of doing background checks on candidates, plus we also operate a law enforcement agency. Um, so, uh, we can, we can find out anything we need to know about these candidates unless people on Facebook meet us to it. And uh, which which has also happened in the past, but you know. Um, so, uh. In in the, in my experience of almost forty years now, there isn't a whole lot. About any of these candidates that doesn't come up publicly. Uh. In in a situation where it's too late. I know you had one situation. I don't know what, twenty fifteen or something like that. Uh, where there was some uh question about a particular college degree on one of the candidates. Um, I I won't go into that, uh, don't don't know the story, I just heard it, uh, so I won't, I won't pursue it. Um, but uh, you know, we we can, um, we we can get that information. If it's on their resume and we want to see authentication, uh, we can get that information.
May I follow up?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, well, sometime it's not just background, if they have some some questionable uh on on their degree, the qualification, I mean, the. Uh, because having the wrong city manager and experience tell us from not far, that can be very costly. So if we want to save money, I mean, I don't know, thirty or forty thousand, I I don't know if we've looked at all the options, but I think there's. There's agencies that will do it for three or four thousand. I don't have it yet, but but I'm saying trying to uh. Achieve it can be very costly. We're not saving money, because having the wrong city manager can be very costly for the city in the long run. And it has happened before. It has happened with city managers.
Mel, I can tell you this unequivocally. Um, you you will not, you will not find a headhunter at four thousand dollars that's gonna do any better for you than we can do already. Okay, and and quite frankly, I think we can do better than most headhunting firms. Um, and even the league tried doing uh placements a while back, in fact, I think didn't, didn't the city use them at one point? Uh, to look for candidates and they only charged five thousand dollars, but all they did for you was collect resumes and dump them in your lap. And uh, I tried it once in Winslow and that's what they did for us. So, so they got out of the business, cause they weren't really performing uh 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 a service that we couldn't do. For ourselves. Now, on the other hand, let me just put this out there, okay? Uh, if you, if if you as a council. Decide you would rather have a consulting firm. Do this recruitment for you instead of uh your personnel department and your city manager. Um, just let us know and we'll stop now and you can hire somebody. Okay? Um, it it it's it's not both, you either have to do it one way or the other, because it it doesn't work with. Uh, the uh internal staff uh trying to trying to compete with the uh. Um, with the headhunters, so uh, so if if you don't want us to do it, let us know now.
Well, we can, we can do it, we can both. I mean, this is, I'm just uh bringing this up. Uh, you know, when you recruit in for for this position, it's not, I mean, you have to make sure we have, I I mean, there's no question, you, Steve, and the personnel here. Can do some job, but we need un- unbiased, we need someone that 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 would just come to us, where we do the interview based on on some fundamentals. Rather than just use our our, what we think is right, because oh, uh, I mean, we make the final decision. But we have to have the proper, the proper vetting, the proper uh qualification. Uh, and I don't know, maybe you can utilize that as part of the recruitment, uh, something that we have to look at.
Could I, I'd like to make a little comment. I mean, I know this has been coming for some time, so I've been talking to a lot of the mayors, all right? I had quite a few sidebars over the last week, actually. And with some big ones and some of the smaller ones, and I brought up the idea of headhunters and the ones that have used them and said. The problem they had with them is that they have a candidate they want, and that's who they get you, and it isn't necessarily they're doing it for you, they're doing it for themselves, cause that's where they make their money. So be very, very careful going down that road, because they're not unbiased by any shape or form, because. They're not, you're not hiring them and run out and find it. They have their candidates they wanna do, and then they're bringing them to you and they. They take out the ones that they don't want. So if they said, if, go slow, get. A slate of candidates and take your time to be sure you let them yourself, and if you don't like them, just go back out, don't just. To go for it because you have to go for it. Um, we can do interim city managers, and we have to, we can do whatever, but. But I didn't hear anything, I didn't hear, out of the six different mayors I talked to. I didn't hear any pluses about hiring a headhunter, so that's, that was my experience, that's my.
No, I agree with that. I think that's, it's better to give the experience than we have here in-house to do it in-house. If we don't find the right candidates, we can just keep on searching.
May I?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, I just wanted to mention that. In addition to typical background checks, not just our internal, but as far as the external, the companies that we usually resource in order to complete. Um, more thorough nationwide education, social media, et cetera. I also did frequent communication from organizations that offer services. Um, because of so much advancement with technology and whatnot, and the one that I found very interesting and would probably apply and be a benefit. In our particular situation with Bisbee is you can do personality assessments. And it asks a number of questions in, and it can base the um, the questions and what they're kind of looking for. In response to the position you're hiring for. So I do believe that there are resources, additional resources that we could go out and do, we can discuss. They're not three, four thousand dollars. You kind of pay per person, or perhaps you pay to have candidates in, you know, run for this uh recruitment. Um, so I wanted to just mention that there are lots of resources out there, and I think my biggest, my biggest love for Bisbee. And sometimes it can be a challenge for Bisbee. Bisbee is unique. And I have a very hard time seeing how an outside recruitment firm that's in Phoenix. Or sometimes they're out of state, um, and yet they're trying to help you, they're providing the service. Bisbee needs to be understood and appreciated for what it is, and I think the best people that can project that and share that with our candidates. Is us. It's yourself, it's me, it's city clerk, it's city manager, it's all of us. And so I I don't like to step away from that personal touch that I think we get to have. Given the close-knit community that we have, and I'd like to encourage that and stay on that path, especially. Regardless of the the position, whether it be city manager. Or, you know, someone in our streets group, they've gotta love Bisbee, and we have to show them what that is.
How did we go wrong with the past few city managers? You said we we've done this and we've done it the way we've done it. How did we go wrong? But for me, I should, I don't look at emotions, I look at facts. We went wrong where we approved some, we we did not do the proper background check, we did not have a college degree, how did we, you know, how did we go wrong?
A different.
I was that, I wasn't here, yeah, yeah.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I I I I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond to that question, because we all look to. Uh, Sierra Vista and see a guy working there that's been city manager now for twenty eight years. That is, uh, uh, you know, that is so far afield from what actually happens out there that you don't look at Douglas. Who in the past ten years has had as many city managers as we have. Okay, think about that. Uh, you know, you you had some clunkers over there too. Um, and you also have to realize that guys like me don't come around very often. Um, the fact that I worked here for eight years, the on 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 my first shift. Was at least three years longer than what some people consider the average tenure of a city manager. Uh Rob Yando, who preceded me, was here for four and a half years. And uh you know, and then um you know, you 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 had an agreement with Justin Johnson for a couple of years. He stayed as long as he expected to and then he quit. He, I think everybody expected that he was gonna move on. I I think those are the things that you have to bring out in the in the context of. Of 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 the selection process, you you wanna know what these people are thinking going down the line. Um you know, I I I think that you have to keep it in in context to the to the i- in the respect that. The average city manager is gonna give you three and a half to five years, okay? On the exception, not the rule. So now let me finish up by saying this. Um back in March, we had a strategic uh planning meeting. And at that point, I told you that I would be um. I don't know what was it, uh I'm already retired, uh I was gonna be quitting. Uh in January of twenty twenty-four, okay? But I also told you at that time that we would set up a recruitment process where. Um and 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 you all need to be involved in this. Uh making it clear that uh whoever you hire is is not gonna be the city manager the first month. Okay, the the city manager the first month is gonna still be me. And that person's gonna be kind of the assistant city manager for a month and is gonna, you know, uh learn a lot of things. Uh that quite frankly, I think I can say this now, I had a two-week overlap with the last city manager and 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 she disappeared after the first day. Um you know, uh uh to 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 uh. Uh paraphrase a co- uh 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 a conversation that I had with. Uh one former uh manager of Cochise County a while back. Uh if I had the opportunity to shadow somebody for two weeks, I would have asked a million questions. Uh so we have to make sure that's built into the process. And I and I have also told you that after I'm done, I'm staying in Bisbee. And if if this turns out to be a complete bust and we have to start over again. I'll be here, okay? If I need to help in March or July or August, I'll be here. You have an opportunity that I have never had.
I will say something, Mel.
Yes, sir.
I think if you wanna say something went wrong, I don't, I don't like to use that word, but what I will say is. You look at what's happened in the last two years with this mayor council and how efficient and what we're doing versus the chaos that went on. For a long time before, there's where a lot went wrong. We get the right person here, we have the right. Mayor and council, we're gonna be successful and I think that is the basis where you you start. And you gotta, everything's gotta click together. We've got great staff, we've got, you know, good. Cohesiveness and I think that's base and builds a strong organization, so I'm not sure that is, you know. I don't think that's what we have before.
Yeah, that's all, that's all. And he said, and I can throw my two cents in there and say, I think the 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 average in Arizona for a city manager is two and a half years on the job. And a lot of that correlates with election seasons as well, because if you have a a significant changeover in council. And direction and things that can lead to a change in management as well. But having a cohesive council makes a huge difference in finding great candidates because the candidates. They do their research as well and they look at the community, they look at the issues and, you know, making decisions based off of. Off of the elected officials as well, you know, and I think Bisbee has a a very cohesive, very good council that's made. The decision, which is why I've seen the the longevity that you have now.
So we can always go the other way, but I I'm fine with the way I see this.
Would would go?
Okay, all right, uh touching out that.
Um I I do have more.
Okay.
I figured, you know, since I, you know, since since we went this late, what the heck, we might as well keep going. Uh what, yeah, I know, cool. Uh did uh well also give you some other information uh in addition to the uh. Uh schedule. Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, Mayor, did you hear, did you hear my question?
What information on what? I'm sorry.
The employment opportunity?
What else did you give them?
The employment opportunity, job description and sorts.
All right, okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure you had that as well. Um if at any point uh over the next three or four weeks. Uh if you feel like you want to uh have any discussion on refinement of anything that's in there. Uh you know, uh. I would prefer to leave it as it is, but uh if you have something you wanna add that that all of you feel is effective. Uh you know, please go ahead. Um Joel's gonna have a packet, then when people send in their resume. She's gonna send them information on how to access a bunch more Bisbee information. And I believe that's gonna be available from our website, so. Um actually, anybody can see it. Um there there'll be kind of a recruitment brochure that I know we did. Once before that turned out fairly nice, so once we update it, it'll be uh it'll be available also, so. Um so I, you know, I feel very confident about this and and uh as the mayor knows, because he spent some time up at the city managers conference. Uh with me and uh and 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 he was, he was uh meeting city managers and. Actually actually recruiting them right there, but um the uh that wasn't why he was supposed to be there though, but but anyway, um. Uh I I I think, you know, that there's some excitement, I I hope. Uh that the uh and and you know, we don't really have a range, we've we've picked a hundred twenty-five thousand.
That's you're not.
Uh I, you know, the 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 recruitment brochure says a hundred to a hundred twenty-five. Uh but i- if you have sites lower than a hundred twenty-five, I think you're fooling yourself. Uh you're not gonna get a real professional for under that in this day and age. I'm not gonna quote any prices, but. I did some checking here recently in towns smaller than ours and it would basically surprise you. Uh what's.
You shouldn't be saying that, the other people are listening now, they're gonna ask more, so.
Yeah, well, that's why, that's why I'm not giving numbers.
Yeah.
You know, uh but you know, but if you compare the quality of life and what's offered in Bisbee versus some of those places. Um you know, you would you would much rather live here, uh quite frankly, so. Um, okay, um I do have a a brief city hall update, uh the uh. Uh we we s- we received three bids on time, uh we received one bid, one hour past the deadline. Um uh we are legally obliged to return the bid that came in late. Um which uh you know, uh I'm I'm a little disappointed about because uh. Um he bid the last time too and he got his bid in on time. I don't know what his problem was this time. So I'd always rather have four than three, but um we're gonna analyze those bids and we're gonna be asking some questions. I I I I don't know if you can expect a recommendation from us at the next council meeting or not. Uh that's gonna depend a lot, a lot on how things go. Um the uh. Um uh in in addition to that on city hall, uh I I may or may not have. Uh mentioned to you that uh the solar power and backup battery. Uh grant from USDA uh was was cut by two-thirds. And uh but well, looking, looking at your faces, I guess I didn't tell you. Um uh they were supposed to award that grant in in two fiscal years. Uh and I found out a couple of weeks ago and the mayor and I had a meeting with USDA. Uh and they basically came in and sat down and told us that we couldn't have the rest of it, so. We have it, that's a separate project from the city hall construction itself. Uh so uh we're still trying to figure out what we're gonna do with that moving forward. Uh as much as I wanna use a renewable resource uh to make that happen, we're. Gonna have to start really, but the good news is with that, we have time. Uh that's, you know, we don't have to start working on the solar part of it until we're, you know, substantially done with building the structure itself, so. Um it's a setback for sure, it's a disappointment for sure. If I didn't sound that thrilled about USDA earlier in the meeting, that's the reason why. Um and 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 there is a history of that um in many cases, so. Um uh not too thrilled about that, but that's that we're dealing with what with what it is. So we're we're gonna go forward from here. Um and then uh the the last thing I have is. I have asked Matt to give you a very quick pool update. Hopefully he's still there.
Yes, I am. So uh for the pool thing, electrical will be starting this Thursday, which is a good thing. We met with contractor onsite. He's me, he's met, he's getting with APS to get everything going. Uh he's got his permit in, we're going forward with that. I did meet with a local retired pool guy. Uh at the pool today um to look at the inlets. Because I I remember I told you, we flushed out lines, uh we found a a blockage and we have, we need to find the tops. Correct tops for the inlets. Uh I really think that was one of the big things. Um we had found that all the tops of the inlets were just drilled out um to allow flow. So I think that's a major uh up uh uh possible jump we're gonna have. Um also, Thunder Mountain Pool Company in Sierra Vista said it's very possible they can help us. But not till like October, uh when they're done with their busy season, because they said we cannot come at all. Uh because we need to give us these pool companies to give us uh proper direction on correct parts. Uh because I can't outsource to a po- pool company, because I won't or pool manufacturer, because I don't know what to say, because I'm not a pool guy, so. Uh that's the update, uh we're we're moving forward.
You're gonna spill order to the pump, is there any back orders now?
Yes, yes, we will be doing that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, from what I understand, the pipes are gonna be okay overall, we don't need to, I mean, just.
Yes, the pipes overall, what we've seen, the cameras, pipes are looking good, uh there is a blockage, like I said.
Okay.
We're we're, that's why we have to get a full company to assess it and we'll probably have to end up cutting that out. Uh and doing a little surgery on the hole.
So we don't have to look, dig in and look up, uh I mean.
Uh it doesn't seem so.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't be doing questions on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and uh Matt, if you're finished, then the city managers' report is complete.
Yes. Well, thank you, um very productive evening and a little long, but.
I will make a motion to an air.
Have a motion, I can do a journal in favor.